Okay, am I unmuted? Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Hey, everybody. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Hilton Head Island Gulligichi Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force Special Meeting. This is July the 20th, 2020, at 1:00. This meeting is being conducted virtually in accordance with Town Council Elegancy Ordinance 2020-13 and can be viewed live on the Town's Public Meeting Facebook page. Following the meeting, the video record will be made available on Town's website at www.hiltonheadislandsc.gov. I am officially calling this meeting to order. Sharice, are we in compliance?
Yes, we are.
Okay, would you call roll for us, please?
Okay, Mr. Theodore.
Present.
Mr. Abdul Malik.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
That's all that's present for today.
Okay, are we done with the roll?
We are. You can move on to the next item.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda for today. And I believe that can be done by consent, or do we need a roll call for that as well?
You need a roll call for this as well as the next item.
Okay, this is the approval of the agenda for today. If there are no changes, we'll proceed with the roll call.
Need a motion for that and to ask for a second.
Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda for today.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for today.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Simmons.
Thank you. And do we need a vote on this as well?
Need to do a roll call for that as well.
Okay, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Theodore.
Approved.
Mr. Malik.
Approved.
Ms. Davis.
Approved.
Mr. Simmons.
For the motion.
Mr. Stevens.
Approved.
Okay, that's the roll. You can move on to the next item.
Okay, it's been some time since we've been able to meet. And certainly, these are challenging times, but the next item we have is approval of minutes from our November 4th, 2019 meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve these minutes unless there are some changes that need to be made.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Will you please call roll?
Mr. Theodore.
Approved.
Mr. Malik.
Accepted.
Ms. Davis.
Approved.
Mr. Simmons.
For the motion.
Mr. Stevens.
Approved.
That's the roll.
Okay, so the minutes have been approved. And the next item we have on our agenda are citizen comments.
Public comments concerning the agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the Town's Open Town Hall Portal. The portal closed on Friday at noon. All comments were provided to the task force for review and made a part of the official record. Citizens were provided with the option to sign up for the public comment participation by phone during the meeting. The public comment period closed at noon on Friday. There were no requests from citizens to participate by phone.
Okay. And it's my understanding that no one can participate by phone today, right?
That is correct. Once the comment period is closed, we're unable to receive phone calls.
Okay. Now, we're moving on to the discussion items. Should I make my comments here, or would you rather make your presentation now, Sharice?
Comments, you can make those at the conclusion of the presentation. There's a list to go down in terms of where to put those comments. That would be the next agenda item.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking is just having some opening comments here as the chairman.
You can make an opening statement, yes.
Okay, thank you. I feel like this is certainly challenging and awkward in a lot of ways. And with us not being in the room and not being able to be together physically, let me first of all say it is good to at least see some of my colleagues. And I appreciate you taking the time to join us in this meeting and in this format. There has been some discussion and it's been, I think, a lot of work that has been done by staff, but certainly, a whole lot of time has... Again, I'm glad that my colleagues have joined me. I encourage us to kind of get back in the mode and get back in the mood as many of us have been in quarantine. And some of these things may not have been as in front of us as some of the other pressing issues that are facing our community and our society today. I am going to hold the rest of my comments until after the presentation as they are relative to what we are discussing today. And hopefully, I'll have a chance to have some closing comments at the end of this meeting as well. Thank you, Sharice.
Okay, good afternoon. I hope everybody is well today. I'd like to direct your attention to the presentation that will be given on the overlay district. As you know, that in November of 2019, the Town Council approved the framework for the Gulligichi Culture Project Report that the task force and staff has collaborated on in terms of giving a framework as to how these projects will be implemented. And with this framework, it's been expressed by the task force that the overlay district was the top priority project. Just that it is very important to preserve what remaining property that Gullah people have on the island. So this is what staff had in mind when putting together this overlay district. And so what it does is it allows you to maintain the traditional communal living among extended families that hasn't been included into the LMO up until this point. Also, just allows for less stringent rules among when you're talking about buffers and setbacks and access. And it allows for more impervious cover to allow for increased developmental potential. So what this district, this overlay district, will be called is the Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District. And the areas that it encompasses, you can see on the map here. It covers the historic districts that have already been identified, which includes Squire Pope, Jonesville, Spanish Wells, Old House Creek, Gardner, Marshland, Chaplain, Grass Lawn, Big Hill, Mitchellville, and Bagel. These new regulations that we have will cover the residential and mixed-use base districts, RM6, RM8, RM12, light commercial, marshfront, Mitchellville, neighborhood commercial, resort development, stony, and waterfront mixed use. These regulations will, however, exclude the PD1, which is your planned unit development, and your industrial districts that are within these historic overlays. So this... We have the tradition among Gullah community that of the communal living among extended family members, whether we're on the same parcel of land or adjacent to each other. So staff has addressed this by including specific terms for family as it relates to family compound and family subdivision. The term "family" will have its own definition within this overlay to mean spouse, parents, biological, or legally adopted children, group of persons related by blood and descendants from a common ancestor. So this recommendation asks for a family compound provision, which addresses the issue that has that we've seen with the LMO with the paper subdivisions. So two new uses have been included within this district. The family compound is a single parcel. You know that most Gullah families live on one parcel. Well, this will allow for multiple homes for people within the same family. Infrastructure must be added in order of construction so that a single-family owner is not saddled with the burden of having to provide infrastructure for the whole parcel. We know that this has been a challenge in the past. Also, this addresses, family subdivision addresses allowing parcels to be subdivided. It was the wish of the community that these parcels would be able to be subdivided in either to live on or to pass down to future generations. And what is important about this, that it does not require complete infrastructure to be put in before building. So you would put the infrastructure up to the parcel where you're building on. Before establishing a family compound, family subdivision, an affidavit must show attesting to the relationship. And that will be described in the LMO. This recommendation of the RM6 district reflects the concerns of the Gullah community who have expressed need for the higher densities for multiple people who want to build on the property. So this adds a new base zoning to the district. So RM4 properties will become RM6 properties, which allow for six units to the acre. If you have five acres, this will allow up to eight dwelling units per acre. This includes single-family, multiple family. And once the workforce housing development has gone through, it will include that as well. So the proposed LMO changes, if you look on the screen, you'll see what the current LMO holds currently and what was proposed. We have heard the issues that concern setbacks and buffers and impervious cover. So that's been addressed in the changes to the LMO. And keeping in mind that there are safety issues that are associated with access, we are able to to reduce those lots for family subdivision. We are reducing that to 20 feet wide easement or 30 foot right-of-way, or for six of our lots, 30 foot right-of-way. Ask it down. Family compound, 20-foot easement will allow for that. Before, these subdivision plans would have to be stamped before you could do that easement. But to go back to the top, the buffer, the setbacks on non-arterial streets will be reduced to 10-foot minimum within the district. Buffers on non-arterial streets have been reduced to a 10-foot minimum. Those planting requirements depend on the single and family and multifamily development. The details of that should be in your packet. Impervious cover, they once varied from 35% to 45%. So right now, with the exception of the districts that require a higher maximum, this is a 45% maximum. Building height is now at a 45-foot maximum. And that's to accommodate for the not being able to... The building height accommodates for not being able to utilize the width of the property. Also, the proposed LMO changes, if you turn to, if you see it on the next sheet, well, it talks about the allowable uses that are included in this new overlay. The base district of RM6, which allows for increased density, your family compound and subdivision would be the two new uses that are included. And also, this will address another recommendation, which was a concern about the fact that that when there's a delay, well, there hasn't... This will address expedited. This will allow for expedited applications. So applications that are within the historic district will be reviewed first to mitigate any costs that come with trying to get your development proposed. Hilton Head Island is one of the unique places in the United States where Gullah landowners have property that they can pass down through generations. It is also a place where they maintain the traditions of living together as an extended family. Those traditions are important to preserve. Therefore, it was important that staff heard those concerns with the current development standards in the LMO that were expressed as a community. And we worked to address those concerns when developing this new overlay district. Just increases the density, reducing buffers and setbacks, increasing height, increasing pervious cover to allow more homes to be built on family-owned land. Thank you, and at this point, we can hear comments or questions from task force members.
Okay, so how shall we proceed with this in order, or?
The order is written out on the agenda, so if you go down the names of the list in that order, that the person will at least allow, at least allow at most 10 minutes to talk about or discuss, ask questions.
Okay, I am to the point of looking at the order now. And the first name that I see that's present here, I believe, is Todd Theodore.
I get to go first?
Are you ready?
Yeah, I am. The... You know, I have some questions going through it. Is... Sharice, I don't know if you can answer this. Is this overlap with the corridor overlay?
I'm sorry?
Does this district overlap with the corridor overlay? So in some instances, this would go to the design review board?
Actually, this goes to LMO committee?
No, no, I'm talking about when this is enacted as an ordinance, as a district, anything that's within that 500-foot of a public.
Oh, I understand. I understand. Yes. Yes. We would have to notify the property owners within the 500 feet of the overlay district, so yes.
Okay. Has there been any discussions about, is there any recognition for the design review board in terms of these districts and how they should be reviewed?
Let me correct on that. So what I understand is that the projects within the corridor would still have to go to design review board?
Yeah, I'm just saying, and maybe I'll pass that like to Levon and the group of... If something is like a long road frontage and stuff and it goes to design review board, is there any aspects of the historic district that would want to be recognized at the design review board level? You know, so that it has a unique vision versus, you know, the way the design review board already interprets the design guidelines? So I just throw that out there. The other is in order to do a family compound or the family subdivision, the property would still have to have clear title?
That's actually something that we can look at. It's not something that we thought about when drafting. So that is something that would need to be considered and upon closer look.
Okay. And then there's no mention of perimeter setbacks and buffers except for the street right-of-way? Has that been addressed?
Say that again. I'm sorry.
That all the setbacks and buffers are based on street categories, so that's based on the street right-of-way? Is there any... How are setbacks and buffers on side and rear property lines? Are those addressed some way?
Right now, it addresses the arterial, the non-arterial streets. But in terms of something else, and then, no, I don't think so.
Okay, because it seems like that might be part of the discussions of how those are treated. And then I noticed in the summary packet that it mentions RM4 and that there's recognition of the Historic Neighborhood District in RM4. Is that kind of irrelevant? Because it, does it start with RM6?
Once the properties have been reached on the RM6, it would start there, yes.
It's just that I noticed that it mentions RM4 in there, so I'm just kind of curious. Oh, and then the other is does the properties... I'm just thinking of opportunities and covering the bases. Do the properties have to be contiguous that would be five acres or larger?
I would think so, yes. Yes.
Because I wonder if in some instance, you know, several property owners could pull their, you know, resources together as properties and be able to, you know, seek a higher density with a larger acreage of property as a joint venture?
That is certainly something that we could take a look at, yes.
Okay. Well, those are my questions. You know, I don't need answers on them right now, but I just wanted to throw those out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Todd. The the next name actually on the list, I should mention, of course, Joyce Wright isn't here today. And I spoke with her, communicated with her earlier, and she was having some issues. So I just wanted to mention that. And we were just concerned with this COVID-19. So I just wanted to mention that to the group as well, that I have some concerns for Joyce Wright at this point. The next name on the list is Ibrahim Abdul Malik. Do you have some questions or comment?
Yes, I do. I want to, I guess I want to initiate my conversation by saying that after, you know, kind of combing through the summary and everything that was presented, there we seem to be missing a degree of flexibility that was consistently spoken about regarding the overlay itself. And that the idea behind the overlay was to set up a physical overlay, but as a concept to deal with the different management issues that we've had in the past. And I don't see the flexibility that, again, that we have consistently spoke about. We have a situation now, should these recommendations be accepted, where it's either this or that. And I know that we spoke on the idea of having sliding scales, particularly related to buffers and setbacks, as well as some of the zoning that will be there. And that's my initial statement. Now, I have several questions that I want to ask now. The first being, in our summary, it indicates that our purpose was intended for new structures. So the question that I have is, how will an older vested rights structure be affected?
Can you provide me with an example of that?
Okay, for instance, if we have, let's say, I think you all have a term in the language of non-conforming. So if you have a situation where you have homes that are want to be included in this overlay, but they don't conform right now to what the LMO says, will those homes be affected, or will they be grandfathered in?
Okay, I think you're saying that you want to know how homes that already exist, it would be affected with it now. Usually, with non-conforming uses, the use of the property doesn't change unless you make changes to the property itself. And I mean, I can be corrected by any of the staff if I'm incorrect at this point. But unless you're changing the physical structure of that property, the, you can't... It will remain the same. Now, if you were to change the property after the overlay has been passed, then it would adhere to the regulations that go with that overlay.
Okay, okay, now, but I guess my question is, would it be language included in the summary of the overlay that would say that? in the summary of the overlay that would say that?
I mean, it's something that we can look at if it needs to be actually verbalized about that, but...
Okay, again, that was, that's a concern, and I know that we have a considerable amount of nonconforming properties in our communities. That needs to definitely be something I think that we have clearly spelled out. And, okay, okay, so we can note that, if you don't mind. In your family compound, on your first sentence, it indicates the, to allow the construction of multiple homes. Now, does the word "construction" eliminate the idea of a placement?
You, placement, construction, it's interchangeable.
Okay. Let's see. The five-year hold on the property. Now, why do we feel it's necessary to have a five-year hold on a piece of property if it's in the compound? If that five-year hold could put a hardship on the family? What if a family runs into a hardship after the compound has, the family compound has been established? And they come into a hardship and they need to do something else with their property within that five years? What happens then?
I certainly see your concern about that, Ibrahim. What, when writing this portion, we heard the community express concerns about preserving property within the Gullah community. And here, I mean, we can't say that, you know, we don't want you to sell, but we want to encourage, we wrote that in there to encourage the preservation, the maintaining of it. So that's why the five-year hold.
Okay, now, okay, I guess, I mean, there's no flexibility there? And again, this is where I'm at, again, with the idea of having flexibility. Again, if we, I know that, I know that once we put that language in the LMO, the town officials, the LMO officers have no other choice than adhere to it. But if there was language in here that would allow for maybe a case-by-case study, then if a hardship arose, and I know no one's going to sell land if they don't have to. But if you have a situation where you have to, but if you're locked into a five-year commitment, then again, instead of them being able to sell, they may end up losing for some other reason. So I just feel like that should be given some, again, my term is flexibility. I don't see the flexibility there.
Okay, thank you, we'll take a closer look at that.
Okay, on the RM6 district, on your, on your paper, let me think what I'm saying here. Yes, the question I have would be, of the RM6 properties, could, I know that we have a situation where in the past the property had a mixed-use application. If you were to go back and examine the historical lifestyle of the Gullah people, almost every piece of property that the Gullah folk lived on was a multiple-use property, not just for residential. But they lived on the front of the property, and perhaps they had a little shop on the backside of the property. So the question here would be, of those RM6 increased densities, should we not look at adding mixed uses to those zoning?
Yes, that's something we could take a look at. Are there RM4 properties that currently have mixed use? Is that what you're saying?
I guess, no, what I'm saying is that rather than, rather than limit the property strictly for residential, why do we not have opportunity to have mixed uses? So that we can live on the property as well as perhaps create business on the same property outside of just housing?
Okay, well, that's something I have to take a look at closer.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, now, the question of the right of ways. And that is, I know there was some conversation in the past that was maybe directed toward the idea that right of ways that will be deeded to the town would not decrease the density. Has there been any consideration, any further consideration for that, for this particular, for the overlay?
The easements will not take away from the density, but the right of way would.
Well, that, and I know that was, I know that was a constant question that was brought up when it came down to the right of ways, because that was the issue. That's, that was a part of the reason why right of ways were not being signed off on in the past, because it would take away from the density, which would eliminate being able to do anything with the property. So I think that we said at least give some high priority to not having to deed away the right of way, even though you would, you know, have access.
Yes, sir, that's only proposed for roads in the dirt road paving program at the moment, but it's something that, again, we can take a closer look at.
Okay. Now, in our, in our language, again, we have the idea of a required paved street. Now, when you say paved street, does that literally mean that the street has to be paved? Or will an all-weather surface suffice?
It depends on whether you're talking about the easement or the right of way. If it's an easement, you can do an all-weather driving service. But right of way, rights of way would have to be paved according to that language there.
Okay, so if the right of way is, if the right of way is, let's say the right of way is deeded off, then whose responsibilities does that right of way become, the paving of it?
If it's to the town, the town would maintain that.
Okay. Okay, now, let me, let me just go a little bit further down. Throughout the, throughout the document that was submitted, the LMO chart, the term official keeps being used. So the question I have is, as when they said overlay, would you be that official that would be the administrator of the liaison between the community and the town?
That would actually go through the current development office, but they would be very aware of what those regulations are once they go into the LMO. I will continue to work with the property owners in terms of how to get that through.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand you. I don't think I'm clear on that. The official is who?
The official is, although I will be working with anybody who comes into the office that goes through the overlay district, the official refers to whoever is in the current planning office that works with, whether you're doing, in the current planning office, when you're, you're putting in for an application. But they will be very aware of what the new LMO changes are. Although I will, I will continue to work with those individual property owners in terms of trying to get that process through.
See, I think, I think, and if you were, if you were named as that person, I think it would bring a great degree of...
Flexibility.
...attention in the community. I think it would leave, I think it would relieve a lot of anxiety in the, in the community when we know that whenever there's a situation we have to deal with, we're going to be coming directly to you and not have to be, not be filtered, you know, through, you know, several officials versus, you know, dealing with you and then have, you know, of course, then you can, of course, send the work and whatever the rest of the nation is going to. But if you, if you are the neighborhood liaison, why would you not be enlisted in this subset to the LMO that specifically deals with the overlay for the Gullah community?
Yes, we can look at changing the language for that. I mean, I will still be involved in those communities. However, when it comes to it going through, it would be a town official, although I would still be working with those properties, but we can certainly look at changing that language.
Again, I think, I think it would just relieve a great degree of the past anxieties that we've had to deal with. Now, in that, in that, in that same vein, would that official be granted the type of flexibility that I was speaking about to address issues on a case-by-case basis?
The person who would be, the official would adhere to what is, what the regulations are written in the LMO. Certainly, if there's a problem, it is something that we would look at as a team and try to address that issue.
Okay, I guess that comes back to my initial point about having the flexibility in the, in the language of the LMO. Now, let me, let me ask a question, if I may. Do you have any, do you have any examples of anybody that may have submitted an application since you've been in this role where these current recommendations would benefit? Or have benefited them?
I can't exactly give you specifics. I mean, we do look at what has been beneficial to individuals in the past and try to, to help them that way. But as in terms of specifics, I can't, I don't, I can't give you that, I don't have that information.
Okay, so let me, let me ask a question, another question regarding the five-year, the five-year restriction that we talked about earlier, that was on the property once it's set up in the compound. Would there be any kind of legal penalty or legal litigation taken against those persons if they violated that five-year restriction?
It depends on what you're talking about. If you're talking about the subdivision, if you, let me take a look at that again. I know within the family subdivision, you would have to, if you, if you tried to sell it, that you would, you would have to go through a whole subdivision process. In terms of legal ramifications, I need to revisit that and look and see what that actual penalty will be.
I guess what I'm asking is, I mean, when you, when you, when you say you got a five-year stipulation on what a person can do with their land, and then if a person, if they violated that five-year stipulation, is there anything that the town could legally do?
Talk to our staff attorney about it. But I'm sorry, Ibrahim, we're going to have to move on to the next question. I appreciate your questions and your comments, and we'll certainly take a look at that.
Well, let me just say then, I still have like another page and a half with the questions, plus some questions about the language in the summary.
I understand that. If you can give me those questions, you want to email them to me, but we really got to get on to the next.
Let me, let me, let me just say this, and for the record, I'll be honest with you. I took five hours of my time away from the call, and I went through this, and now you're going to tell me I only have 10 minutes to do my, give my, my comment? I don't, I don't feel like that's being, I'm being, I don't think that's a fair equation. I'm just saying, you, you know, you, I was, I was asked to review the document. I reviewed the document, I have all these questions, and now I have 10 minutes to give them. And it's like I'm being rushed through on the call, stuff that I took my time to go over, as much as you know that.
We can loop back around to you once we've heard everyone, we'll give you another pass at it. Does that work? Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, are we moving? I will say that, Ibrahim, I appreciate the work that you've made and the observations that you've made. And this is, again, a very awkward format that we find ourselves in. So the, the limit to 10 minutes is kind of arbitrary. I'm not sure where that number came from, but I know it's in order to try to move the meeting. But I do feel like we should have time to go through these, because these are very important items and issues. And hopefully we get a chance to circle back around to you. We will cover some of your concerns with other people's comments. Palmer Simmons, I believe. I'm not looking at my agenda, I got to get back to this. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis, I have Martha Davis on the list next. Ms. Davis?
Yes. Well, I've been sitting here patiently listening. A lot of the comments so far has been very interesting. I don't have anything additional to say other than I would like to thank Theresa for working in this complex capacity. And I just feel that she sort of just got a grilling. And I just want to encourage her to continue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Palmer Simmons.
Good afternoon, everyone, who I may not have spoken to directly. My comments will be brief, and for whatever time I may have, or how brief I may be, I'd like to yield... My comments will be brief, and for whatever time I may have, or how brief I may be, I'd like to yield back if at all possible to Ibrahim, because I did speak with him briefly, and, and he's expressed a lot, he will or should express a lot of concerns that we have, so it don't need to be redundant. But I'd like to start back with Ted's concern about the, how the, the new overlay district may run interference, if, if I, if I'm saying that correctly with our current overlay districts. I think that's a technicality that we definitely need to pay some attention to, and his comments about the design review board. It's going to be interesting, because we were trying to eliminate some of these steps and not, of course, and we want to have developments that would be pleasing in, in every sense of the word of development. So I think those comments, as we look into how we make sure the design areas and the, don't run interference or confusion with other districts as well. Want to back up one more question, one other point to be made is the 45 height maximum. I wasn't sure which districts it applied to, and I'll just go through this Sharice, and you know, and then if you want to make a note and respond after I'm done, that's fine. But I wanted to find out about the 45, 45 foot height, what districts where that might have been limited to in a sense. And wanted to go back, my next point was the five acre is for a family compound or family subdivision is, was it minimum of five acres? What happens if a person, a family has less? What would be the, the process for them to get their properties put into a compound if it's less than five acres? Is that possible? To still have a family compound? Or, or even family subdivision, being able to subdivide the property, that's still a reasonable amount of property that could be divided. So however the rules will apply. Also, I think the, the five year hold is, is just a bad, a bad statement. I think that statement could almost be eliminated simply because when you start getting into this point of other people's land, I find that we're getting a lot of policing going on, if I might use that word, for such a recommendation. You know, it gets to where the town is, you know, I, I think taking more control and needs on other people's property. And I think Ibrahim's point should have been well made that families could, for whatever reason, get into a situation where they may need or want to sell. And I don't think they should be, you know, held, because you decided to subdivide your property or otherwise create a family compound. A family should, should know what their circumstances and conditions are, and I think it, you know, is it saying that you can't sell it to a, to an individual family member if it's such a, such a thing? Who is being limited? What is the, the sale? What, what, you know, how, how does that really work? I, I, I just find that that's another one of those things that I found in reading this where I felt there was quite a bit of policing of the property going on by some of the guidelines that was being set. And my next point was an RM6 question. I have something here that says compatibility, so my notes that may, may lead me a little stray on that one. But there was something in reference to compatibility. And then the easements and right of ways. One did not take away from the density, but surely takes away from the amount of land, you know, that you would use in order to develop. So where's that common ground? Is there such a thing to allow for developments if you lose that? You know, I mean, if you don't take away from the density because you lose it, it would be a shame that you gave up 10 feet or 20 feet, and all of a sudden, you know, what you could be, build a strip of land now eliminates that. So if the right of way itself by use doesn't take it, and surely 10 feet of land on one side and the other shouldn't cause you to lose what you didn't lose from one thing, but you lose it on the other hand. So I definitely wanted to, to bring that point. And I think another point that Ibrahim brought up about the official. The goal behind the official was a person who could eliminate some of the mistrust, some of the red tape and all that we would have to go through. And I think if these guys, guidelines are implemented and set, you know, there has to be some steps where these can be carried out without a, without further red tape. And, you know, Sharice, we, we, we would surely believe that you would be an agent of the town and could make a decision based on these recommendations and not have to go back to someone else at a decision that should be clearly bailed out. I, I would imagine such times would come when it may need some additional discussion, but surely if a great amount of authority on making decisions is not placed directly with you, then we would have not really gotten as much as we would want out of your position and much as we would want for our community to have to not follow the red tape, not follow rules, not do it correctly, but we feel as the, as, as what we would like to define the official as, that would be you, Sharice, and that you would have enough latitude to make a decision and say, well, yes, we can do that, or that you could sign off, given whatever degree of, you know, decision would need to be made, you know, and not have to go back to this, that, and the other. And if you all have followed my few little notes along, you can, you can either comment now or point at a time when we could see that these have been addressed, I would be just fine with that. And for whatever time I have left, if at all possible, I'd like to yield it back to, to Ibrahim. Thank you.
Is there some time to yield back to Ibrahim?
Yes, there's some time that he can revisit his comments.
Ibrahim, would you like to do that? Would you like to do that now, or would you like to wait until after? I think I'm the only one that's left.
I, I prefer to wait so I can get my, get my thing back together, okay?
Okay.
That's all right.
I think that would be fine. We had recognized that we might have to circle back around and have a little bit of flexibility to deal again with this format. So I believe if everyone else here has spoken, then it is, is down to me. And I will again apologize at the risk of repeating what a lot of my colleagues have already said. And let me just say that, again, with this format, it is very difficult for us to kind of operate and have some open discussion. I don't believe that we're taking any action today, and I have some questions about how we do that, even in a virtual format. I just want to reemphasize some of the things that have already been said, and if I can break up any original points, that, that might be, be good too. But I think that we are all repeating some of the same things. The biggest thing that I would like to say for the record is that we definitely need to have some flexibility, and I know that's been stated before. I think that this is important, that we get something done with an overlay district, but we don't want to rush into something that's going to lock us into a, a place where we have to go back and forth, as some of my colleagues have already said, and be locked into what the official has to say about something that's written in stone in, in LMO. At the beginning of this process, we talked about being able to think outside the box. We know that a lot of our properties do not conform. They have different dynamics. I appreciate the comments that we've made in relation to having whoever that official is be the, the last and final word, without having to go through some other process which kind of complicates things. So while these are challenging topics, we do want to kind of simplify it and streamline it. One of the questions that I had has already been answered as far as the five year issue and preservation, if we wanted, you had a family member that wanted to sell the property, if they were selling to another family member, then that would certainly be in line with what we, our mission is with the task force as far as preserving the culture and keeping it within the family. I appreciate Mr. Simmons' comment in that I don't know that we want to be into enforcing that five year. We could certainly encourage folks to hang on to their property, but I don't know if we can say it should be five years, three years, 10 years, eight years, or whatever that arbitrary number is. Some time ago, we sent a letter to the council and to staff. And it was in response to this, some of the work that was being done. Sharice, do you recall this letter? Do you have a copy of it? I believe that it was sent sometime around the first of June. This was sent June the 3rd, 2020. I just, I'm sorry. Yes, you did receive it?
We did receive that letter, yes.
Okay. I'm going to just read a portion of it that it says, just to remind us all of, some of us what it says, and it was sent to the mayor, Steve Riley, and Jennifer Ray, and Sharice DeBose as well. In an effort to continue an open dialogue, the native island leadership would like to address some of the areas we feel are still in need of attention, as well as focus on several of our community's overarching issues. One of the primary areas continuing remains an issue is that there needs to be significant improvement and connection between the town and our community. I'm not going to go on with every single word of it, but that just speaks to the flexibility that we need to have in the whole point of establishing the neighborhood administrative position so that we would have someone at the town level that we feel like we could go to to help resolve some of these issues. And understanding once again that a lot of our properties may be complex and not conform into some of the properties that are within our PUDs and not laid out clearly in a lot of ways. And as some of my colleagues have mentioned before, that may be situated in different areas. If people wanted to put pieces together, then again, that requires some out of the box thinking and a little bit of flexibility there as well. We, we talk about preservation of the culture, and we've mentioned allowable uses to the property. And I know the one thing that has come up time and time again has been challenges as to how we use our property, and, and again, how the properties are situated and where they are, and how they might be viewed as encroaching upon developments or some of the LMO restrictions in the town, when I think in fact it's actually the other way around, because a lot of these properties and folks were here before, and now we're having to conform to what the town has set forward or what we find we're kind of running into some challenges now when we have to interact with some of these historic neighborhoods and the properties and the challenges that we have with them. The, I'm sorry, I'm trying to use the best of my time as well. And I know that these are not a lot of things that we will get answered today, but I hope that staff and Sharice is taking good notes so we can go back and, and try to go back through some of these. The, the effect of the language that is questionable, that should not be incorporated, approval of a family subdivision constitute approval of a final plat. If, why would a family be denied a right to further subdivide their property? This language can drastically affect future potential development rights. From what I've heard, I'm paraphrasing, paraphrasing a little bit, but I've heard with the discussion of right of ways and easements and how they affect our properties seems to still be an issue and something that I hope we can take a closer look at, because some properties may not be big enough to withstand sacrificing some of the acreage. And it certainly decreases the value and the ability to do what the folks may be trying to do. I would just close by saying that there are some other issues as well that have come to my attention as I try to have discussions with some folks in the community and certainly our native island leaders. Some of those items are certainly related to drainage, that there is not a clear drainage plan that is publicized by the town and the flood plain maps that affect the work that we're doing as a task force, and, and the flooding issues has been something that I've heard time and time again. And a lot of the ditches have not been cleared. And we also want to talk about some of the opportunities or options that might be available to property owners that have challenges with their property as far as exchanging properties that are owned by the town. And if that would be something that is an option. I know that just last week we dealt with a business that was challenged, and it was an issue with the town, and it was resolved, whether it was amicably or through legal issues. My comments at that meeting and my comments now is that I hope we will work as hard as we did to accommodate that situation with the challenges that we may find ourselves in with some of our historic neighborhood properties. And let me just look back through here, there was one other thing that, okay, I think that's, that's the, the most of my comments right now, other than the fact that going back to the letter that I referenced earlier, and it kind of goes back to what our original mission envisioned statements were, and why it is so important that the work we do as a task force and that we continue to stay in place now and continue to work on these issues and certainly hopefully to give some meaningful input to Sharice and, and staff as far as preservation in our Gullah Beach culture and the education of our community, and certainly infrastructure and the preservation of the Gullah Beach culture. I think that at some point we would like to certainly be able to give some input as to review and see how we're doing as a task force, but also to see how our staff is doing, and certainly that would be something that would be included for Dr. DeBose. With that being said, I, I will echo what Ms. Davis said, that I understand that these are challenges that staff has, and it is some things that we need to work through. I'll be the first one to admit that I'm certainly not an expert in a lot of these areas, but I hope that we can be a voice to express our concerns and the need to continue to work with our community to resolve a lot of these issues that continue to repeat itself and keep coming up in the community. Thank you.
Carolyn McVinnie just joined the meeting. If you want to circle back for her comments?
Ms. McVinnie, thank you for joining us. I had mentioned earlier that it's been a while since we've been all been able to be together and hopefully we've gotten the agenda.
Was, wasn't this, was this meeting supposed to start at two?
It was started at one o'clock.
I never got noticed. I never got notice of that. That's why I'm here so late.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sure the notice went out, and it was probably posted on the town's website as well. I'm sorry that you got the time mixed.
You're probably right, and I just had it on my calendar. It's 2:00.
Well, these days, these days, we blame it on, we blame it on our COVID brains. So a lot of stuff is happening now, and this format is definitely hard to operate in. But since you are here now, we invite you or encourage you if you have any comments or questions.
Well, one of the things that was probably addressed already was where we are defining family subdivision. I have no idea what that last sentence is supposed to say in the first paragraph, no, in the, in the last paragraph. Prior to the sale of property in a family subdivision to non-family members, the seller must the process a complete... So it just doesn't make sense to me.
I apologize for the wording of that sentence. It just basically says that if you sell to someone...
Can, can you just read it how it's supposed to read? Prior to the sale of the property in a family subdivision to a non-family member, the seller must...
Process a complete subdivision application as established in the LMO.
Okay, great. Thank you. And the, and the other thing is this also does not address anything with, with respect to heirs' property. There's still that lingering issue. Or is it feasible that people who are members of the family, although the entire family is not identified, that the, the property can be subdivided? Is that what we're saying?
In terms of the heirs' property issue, we would have to take a closer look at that.
Because it would seem that this seems to get around it, except for the fact that somewhere at the very end, we say, you have to have a title. So we go through all of this, and then, I'm trying to see where it is, but somewhere at the very end. Oh, establish, okay. We address vested rights.
I'm sorry, did you have a question there?
Yeah.
Levon, I'm not sure I'm able to get it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to find where this...
I, I would imagine that you would be able to do...
Oh, here it is, vested rights.
You'd probably be able to do a family compound. Ms. McVeigh?
It doesn't really describe, define vested rights. Unless it's defined somewhere else.
Okay, can you give us a reference of what it is you're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, on page 10, number, number six says expiration. And it says, "Approval of a family subdivision establishes a vested right in accordance with Section 16-2-102.J.1, vested rights for approvals of site-specific development plans."
I guess vested rights is, it's written somewhere, it's written in the LMO. And that means the right to undertake and complete development of property under the terms and conditions of a site-specific development plan or phased development plan as provided in the South Carolina Code of Law Ordinance 6, Chapter 29, Article 2, Section 6-29-1510, and Section 16-2-102.J.1, vested rights for approval of site-specific development plans of this nature.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, well, first of all, I don't know where... Okay, so I would have to read the South Carolina Code in order to find out what vested rights means. I'm assuming. And my question is, to, to whom does, do the vested rights, rights go? Do they go to the applicant? Do they go to the existing owner? I'm just, I'm just not sure.
If I'm wrong, I can be corrected, but I believe it goes to the applicant.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's my question. If that's the answer, that's fine. Do we have? Do we have an idea of of how many plots, how many areas would qualify for a family subdivision? Or a family compound?
That's not research that I've done, but it would certainly depend on the number of available acreage, what the base zoning is in terms of, yeah. So it's not something I have information on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McVity. I believe, I believe we can circle back around now to Ibrahim. Is that correct, Sharice?
Yes, sure.
Ibrahim, if you would like to finish your thoughts or questions?
Yes, sir. And, and ladies and gentlemen, I guess my next question is, under the, the review process, I think it's Section Y, C3, the official will be given 60 days to act on an application. So the question would be if, I mean, 60 days is, is a lot of time to simply act on an application, whereas we talked about the expedition of processes, but we weren't given any kind of timeframe. But there's language in the LMO that says pretty much that the official doesn't have to really act on an application. I mean, have a 60-day period to act on the application. So how do we address expediting the process in literal terms?
Well, it's written in the LMO amendments that any additions, improvements, applications that go through in the historic overlay would be reviewed prior to other applications. So that's how it would be expedited.
Yes, I understand, but I guess in your, in the, in the attachment, in that attachment, the application review process, again, is... You know, if, if a family submits an application the first of the year, and they got up to, you know, 60 days before they get an answer. I mean, you can see how, and, and I understand that we're saying we're going to expedite it, but can we not include language in there that would specifically say, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna limit it to, I don't know, a week or two weeks? Because there, I mean, there's, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a, you submit an application, right? And then, I know I saw somewhere where the application, that the official, the official had to respond to the application within, I think, six days or seven days. And if they didn't, then that meant that whatever a person was applying for would get approved. I saw that language somewhere. The compound review. I think it was the compound review.
Okay, the process isn't 60 days. We get comments back within two weeks, but 60 days is state code.
We're allowed that. We just don't take that much time.
We allow it, but we don't take that much time to review an application.
Okay. But I, I saw somewhere in the, I don't know. Okay. The, the other, I guess the other concerns that was, that were apparent to me in the, in the overlay was that setbacks and waivers, setbacks and buffers are not being addressed between adjacent properties. And I know that at some point, I know that we, we, I know at some point in our task force conversation, there was an idea mentioned that perhaps between family and family, that setbacks and waivers could be totally eliminated.
Well, we can take another look at that, too.
Okay. And, you know, and the thing, you know, I, I, I want, I guess my final comment would be us examining, I guess, the recommendation from the consultant to have an outside, to have outside legal assistance with us forming the document so that we have the right language in there. Because I know that the language is what can either hurt us or aid us in the best way. And I'm looking at this as a mainman, and it is, and my head is spinning. So I think at some point, us moving toward that recommendation by the consultant to have outside legal aid to assist us with the construction of language that allows for, again, some case-by-case examinations and a, and a wide degree of flexibility so that we can address the issues going forward.
Thank you for your comments. We'll certainly take a look at those.
Thank you.
Okay. I had one other couple of comments that I wanted to, wanted to make. Unless any of my other colleagues have something else they'd like to add as we try to include everybody circling around. Okay. We've made, Ibrahim just made some reference to some of the information that we had in the consultant's report. Also, very much significant, and I don't want to say remotely, remotely related to what we're doing here, is the 278 corridor project and how it's going to affect that neighborhood coming on to the island and the bridges that are being replaced in that process. If you haven't been keeping up, is moving forward. I was able to have a conversation with David Johnson, who's leading that committee. And I was encouraged, somewhat encouraged, that the folks from that project and the South Carolina DOT was very interested in what our consultant's report said. The question that I have for you, Sharice, and staff, is that we had a little bit of a trouble trying to find that report. And it doesn't seem like it's listed on the town's website, which I assumed that it was, and I was directing people that were looking for that report, that they could find it there. Is that something that we can make available on the town's website or in some place where it's easy to access? Am I muted?
A moment. We can send you a link as to where to get that report from.
No, that's not my question. My question is to make it available for anyone that wants to find that report. Can we post that on the town's website somewhere where people have access to the information?
Levon, it's Jennifer Ray. It's my understanding that our policy is that if the plan wasn't adopted as written by town council, then it can't be published on our website. So we need to, I can't answer that question right now. We'll need to do some research and find out what, what the ramifications were with that, what the action was that was different, and see how we can make that available. I can share, though, because you referenced the 278 corridor project, and we did share, staff shared the recommendations from the consultant and the task force, task force's additions and staff's comments with Charles Cousins to be able, per David Johnson's request, share with DOT and those involved in that project. So we are making it available, but I can't, right, right now, that's the answer I've been given is it wasn't adopted as written, so it can't be published on the website. It's on there as part of the packet, so that's why we're saying we can tell you how to get to it, but can't add it as a published, adopted document.
Okay, I, I guess I'm a little confused, and you can maybe look into that and come back and give us a, a, a good answer.
We will give you a response.
Yeah, I understand. I thought that, that the, the report coming from the consultant was approved and adopted, or not so. That's what we're working from now, isn't it? That was not, that was not.
We are working from that document. I don't have the language in front of me right now to see how it was presented, why town council didn't adopt it as written, but that's their policy. So I'll have to do some research, Sharice and I will. And we will get back to you and the task force on, on that.
Okay, because I know there are other plans that are, I guess they are adopted and approved, but they are available on that website, aren't they? Okay. I hope you will look into that and get back to us. That's also a part of one of the initiatives that we had as a task force. And we talked about our resource center, and where people can go to get information and education and things like that. So I hope that that document, as well as other things that we are trying to create, that was one of the items that was a part of our work plan, I believe, as well. May not have been a priority, but it was talked about early on as part of our low hanging fruit. And I'm not exactly sure where we are with a lot of these things as we re-engage after being quarantined for so long. The letter that I mentioned earlier, I'd like to share just a little bit from one of our councilmen who did respond, because the council received that as well as staff. And this is from Councilman Ames. And he just kind of listed the topics. Didn't really have any solutions, but these are the kinds of things that I think that we should still be focused on. Many of them have already been mentioned here today, but they are the Historic Neighborhood Preservation Administrator, Effectiveness and Review of Performance, the Task Force, our role going forward, unfinished business, heirs' property, infrastructure, education, preservation of culture, development rights slash impediments, infrastructure and LMO restrictions, historic overlay district, proposed amended standards, density, flexibility, multiple land uses, administrative fees, fast tracking, common terminology and practices for consistent treatment. Under this whole overlay, historic overlay district, the last item there is moratorium on fines and/or restrictions. This next section is case studies. It's variable between properties. And that's something that we want to continue to work with our staff and council. We certainly need the support of council and staff as we go forward. Those items are worth mentioning, even though, like I say, some of them were repeated or discussed here earlier. I'm very interested in the educational pieces and the case studies as we try to identify some unique situations that appear in our community. I do understand that the task force has some unfinished business. We don't know that we will be in existence forever, but I do think that this is a very critical time and for us to think about how we operate going forward. And again, I encourage my colleagues to kind of re-engage as we re-energize our efforts in working to this Gulligichi Cultural Task Force. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you for your feedback and your questions. Staff will sit down and we'll take a look at all that was mentioned a little more closely. What I'd like to talk about before we adjourn, future dates that are coming up that the task force will meet again on August 6th to vote on the overlay. The next steps in terms of this going forward would be the LMO Committee, Planning Commission, Public Planning Committee, Town Council first and second readings. And that would be the process going forward.
Sharice, and you will share that with us, that process?
Yes, I will.
I have a pretty good memory, but not that, not that great. Okay, is that?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you can hear me or not, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir, Mr. Christian.
I've been following along and just wanted to beg your indulgence to recognize Carolyn McVitty. He is an outgoing planning commission member who served with six years of distinction. And as you indicated, don't know how much longer your task force is going forward, but wanted to recognize her, and we will do so at the next planning commission meeting, as you well know, but wanted to recognize her as well in front of her colleagues on your committee. And I beg your indulgence for, for interrupting. But I thought it was important to point out her service to the town and to this task force.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. And we certainly will be having some discussions with Ms. McVitty and hope that she will continue with our task force, even though she may not be an official member of the planning commission. I will echo your sentiments and her service and have really appreciate serving with her as a commissioner. And I look forward to continuing to serve with her as a member of the community and certainly of this, of this task force.
I, once again, I beg your indulgence and congratulate you and your fellow task force members on your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Sharice, was there something? Anything else that we have? Any of my other colleagues have any closing comments?
Nothing else.
If there is nothing else, then I, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. And thank you for your service. What was that, Palmer? I think you're muted. I think they're trying to keep you quiet.
That would be nothing new. I move for adjournment. I have no further, no further comments at this point. So, but you know.
Thank you. That's, I think we have a motion for adjournment. Do we need a second? I think everybody might be, okay. Thank you so very much. I appreciate everybody being here in the meeting. And I will assume that we are now in adjournment.